Hannah, could you put on the steps, what steps she would move to, a person would move to with her, with their years of experience?
That was the number we said, the nineteen, that would be the nineteen oh nine.
If we're going to talk about this, now, again, she's already being paid this, but now he's gonna have to hire somebody. So what are you gonna pay somebody?
Well, depending on who we hire, I mean, if they have experience, then they, you know, it's possible they're going in and not be just one, but if it's a new hire or something, it's gonna be, they won't, you know, hire.
There will be, there is expense to train someone, and there will be considerable expense there. But that's what we, we got, it's irrelevant, that's what we do.
The only other question I have about this, if he's got another employee with twenty twenty-one years, certainly they've got just as much experience, I would think, as anybody else coming in.
And that was.
With that experience from another department, per se. That's where I have maybe an issue with the total twenty-one dollars.
Well, they're doing like that.
Well, any of the other employees.
Yeah.
And that's, that's my only concern there, not that experience and things like that don't count, yeah. But if we've got another employee with the same amount of years, per se.
It's making a lot, like, it makes.
Right, a little bit of difference there.
It don't leave, in my book, when the question about supervisory pay and supervisor, and he said more than likely to be in the supervisory role of some sort, what incentive does that give for anybody in the office who's been there for sixteen years, looking to get ahead, to be a supervisor? If you hire a supervisor from over here and bring them over here, you're just at that dead end and you ain't going nowhere. That's all there is to it, you ain't got no advancement because we took somebody from here and put them here. You don't have nothing to work for. So I don't understand this, this is, this, this is not right. Maybe in county government, but it's definitely not right in a civilian job.
Do I have a motion for this budget amendment? Do I have a motion for this budget amendment? Do I have a motion for this budget amendment? Being known in the files. Move on to.
Certainly, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris, I apologize. Is it customary that if that, if a person moves from one position to another, that they keep? I don't think anybody's done that since I've been here, so that's why I'm asking. Is it customary that they keep their years of service and when they enter a separate step scale, they still enter their years of service? Is that customary, has that happened, or is that something that you guys need to say? It's okay if such and such is a twenty-year employee, years or twenty, or they are twenty years.
I think that's on the very margin.
Mine also, is that something you guys need to, no?
I, I don't know. Yeah, they're still an employee of county, so they gotta, they gotta keep that.
That's my belief.
But at the same time, you have to have an amendment because he's like, does not have enough funds to cover a raise.
That's what I'm asking, if, if he goes to, his person, and they accept the dollar, he has to go.
We turned this down.
Right, so he has to come back for another amendment versus,
Correct.
versus you guys discussing that because there's new issues on here, isn't there? Yeah, I always know. Yeah, there is discussion, but is that something that you don't have a figure, and I put you on the spot and I apologize.
No, I mean, I can do the math real quick. Uh, but yes, I mean, a person will be.
There's no sense in them having to come back for another amendment if, if you guys are well-bodied and doing that. If that's what, if that's what you wish.
Whatever her, whatever years of service are at that rate, I'll agree with that, I'll make a motion for that.
Twenty-eight.
I was gonna say, you've already, she's already come.
Twenty, twenty-one years of service in Ethan's office would be nineteen oh nine.
Nineteen oh nine.
And then twenty-one years of service in Clint's office, not a supervisor, would be twenty dollars and eighty-six cents.
So your amendment would be the nineteen oh nine to be added under the condition that this person was hired into his office. I, I don't think we can amend the money into the office and then this person say, I would rather stay where I'm at, or I would rather go somewhere else. So is that, am I confusing them?
I'm misunderstanding why we're doing it, because we've been, we've been dropped this.
Yep.
I'm listening.
He can come back, he can come back and ask for the next budget finance, we meet on Tuesday, so.
And the, and void and move?
No. No, we were just trying to keep it to where it was, I was just saying, do we need to do an amendment? But if you, we, again, have a budget finance meeting Tuesday night.
You're trying to say that if we do it, if we do it that, then they don't have to come back.
They don't have to come back, but we also are in really good shape because we have another one Tuesday night. And that would give everyone involved enough time to discuss whether they would or whether they wouldn't, so. Maybe that's where we'll pre-choose.
Moving on to school.
I, I think mine's pretty simple, it's, uh, so state out, there's new money involved, it's state outcome money we were speaking back from January. I originally figured it would be seven six one hundred, one sixteen. I, I'm gonna move it to seven one one oh oh, one sixteen, and the other two, two lines. Again, this is not new money, it's just moving money within the budget.
You heard the man, any questions? Still have a motion, in a second? All voted aye?
Aye.
And, we've got the next one down here, revision of ten and zero one oh one.
I'll try to make this super, as easy as it could. Uh, we voted on one oh one the last budget finance meeting. It was stated in the meeting, there was, the raises are for each people and who they were not for. The cost of living raise got out there and, and then the sheriff called me and said, hey, we didn't get that raise, and I was, well, you didn't ask for it, number one. But then he said, well, I didn't know I had to ask for it, but everybody else asked for it. And then Terry called me and said, hey, that wasn't in there, how, what was going on? So clearly, he didn't understand it either. Regardless of what happened there or what it is, I went back, I spoke to the sheriff as early as yesterday and, and just asked him, how can we work on this together, we'll meet? The sheriff cut twenty-eight thousand five hundred, I'm correct on that? Twenty-eight thousand five hundred, we would be taking an additional twenty-one thousand dollars on in deficit. Heather and myself cut money directly out of our budget to go into that. And it, I would recommend that we add the three percent for the jail and the sheriff's office with the cuts that the sheriff's made and the cuts that Heather made. I'm making the motion that we approve that.
And I say?
Okay.
On the paper of the aye?
What, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't there, in the same thing, did we, we didn't have a grant to the sheriff, the jail, and EMS in that same?
EMS is not getting the three percent call, but that, he's not requesting it because he's proposing.
Changing steps.
Changing steps, yeah, correct.
What I, the general public, what I really want them to understand is you guys are, have many more than one budget, it's not just one budget. When we say county government, that's the courthouse, that's our maintenance guys, that's the guy that we directly control with us, or, and, and the elected officials. The sheriff's budget, the road department budgets, I really want them to understand, those are completely separate budgets, we don't, we haven't grouped those all together. I heard somebody say, well, we did it in the past, well, we've only had three as a county, so. And then one of those was last year, so. So, future references, if we go with the cost of living, I'd say we probably, I probably will ask for the whole county. If not, we'll just go with the budget, departmental raises, whatever they ask for, and go with it that way. But I will say, the extra money that the sheriff asked for in his budget, he, he pulled it back out, so. And, and we moved some money from out of the grants and things, so. It, it's really, it's twenty, it's gonna cost the county twenty-one more thousand in the deficit, and we get to give the sheriffs, the jails, all of those guys the three percent raise as we get the courthouse and main, and the, uh, road department, so.
Man, honestly, you, that night we voted on it, I thought the cost of living, it all went across the board. You know, that really got tall views.
Yeah, but it wasn't because we didn't know it was in there, because they didn't put it in there.
But I, I thought it was across the board, the cost of living was forever across the board.
And again, that's why Heather reiterated it, she said it twice, Clint and Eric, that's why, that's why we wanted to make sure that was clear. All that's watering the bridge doesn't matter, it wasn't clear, and we clarified it tonight. We did, you know, the best we can do with what money we have. This budget's a good budget, we're still coming in physically responsible, under the deficit we had last year, and we'll try to do that again the next year. If we work on anybody going up from here on out, guys, it's got to be our county government. It's got to be those ladies that are over there taking the cussing about their taxes and, and plates. We got to work on that, if we work on anything. Just sorry about that, speak.
Okay, any other questions? You're done, all voted aye? Any opposed like that? Okay.
This time, if you'll stand, I ask Commissioner Locken. Well, Trish, the devil, Father, thank you, Lord, that this day that you blessed us with. Thank you for this honorable commission, Lord, uh, and the elected officials that serve our county, I ask that you bless them, Lord. Lord, uh, as we do the county's business, and that, let us always be quick with wisdom and slow with anger. Lord, and do the county's business the way that we, that we should have. Lord, we thank you for all the men and women in the service that's stationed around the world, and, and I ask that you protect them, Lord. Lord, uh, lead guidance throughout this meeting, let everything we say and do glorify thy name in Jesus' name, for it.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Got a roll call for you, sir?
Elijah Thomas.
Here.
Brian Teemer.
Here.
Idris Joyner.
Here.
Randall Reiver.
Here.
Shane Hanks.
Here.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Larry Didju.
Here.
Vince Gray. Archie Crier.
Here.
Melissa Deal.
Here.
Bradley Jones.
Here.
Clint Matthews.
Here.
Mark Dorch.
Here.
Alexis Tep.
Number five is the approval of amendments. Anyone has any corrections or additions, distractions, or they go now?
Probably can approve.
Commissioner Locken.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crier, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six is the approval of the five monthly reports. Have you had those, does anyone have any questions? motion by Mr. Matthews.
Here.
By Mr. Reddick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven is the approval of the notaries, it's Ms. Cindy Lufman and Ms. Nawana Pitten. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number eight is a recommendation from the opioid abatement committee. You have those in your packet. Those come from the opioid abatement committee, and there are many meetings. If you have any questions, um, I think Ms. Cheryl Woodton is here. If you have any questions for any of it, especially in the school system, I ask her to be here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have some stuff with that.
Okay.
I know I'm part of that committee, I wasn't present, I had some prior obligations the day that we went over all this, but. You know, I'm just, I'm looking at some of these numbers on here and looking at what it's for, and, and to be honest with you, I I don't think some of this would be very fruitful. I think, I think we, we really need to get back together on it, I mean, you know, the school system asking for a vehicle to be used as a rolling billboard, and five thousand dollars for a wrap to go on it. And that's twenty thousand bucks for, for a sensuited car. I, I, I don't see how that would have any.
The opioid packet that I give y'all specifically laid out is for advertisement, and I think that was their way of saying, spending the money on advertising. I do agree with what you said, the night of that meeting, they were asking for, help me up my twenty-five thousand, and that committee cut that in half to what it is now, or where it is now.
Okay, but what's the billboard used for?
So it'll be used at school events, countywide events, city events, I think it will have an opioid abatement message on there. A lot of counties are going with billboards, we have a, we don't have a lot of billboards in Stewart County, um, so that was a lot of, Houston County, for example, their opioid abatement, uh, committee that they have, give ten thousand dollars to Mayor Brack, and he threw out t-shirts in the parade that said, didn't say say no, but it had an opioid message on there. That was just the committee's way of saying, okay, this is how we're gonna do the advertisement of this, that's.
That's a pretty good way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be at all the fairs and all the events, and that's what they've stated, so. I can only tell you what they stated in the committee meeting. If any one of the committee members, y'all are the one negotiating that price for sure, for something you don't like or you do like, you speak up.
What is, Mr. Mayor, what's the men's recovery housing for?
Um, for the.
Thirty-five.
That is the men's recovery housing over in, it's a village in Dixon, right outside of Dixon, actually, back towards Burns. But they have, uh, on-site housing, they are townhouses, that, that the gentleman will have a chance to go into. And in the center of that, they have a hub called their neighborhood service center, that they have medical services in, they have, um, recovery services, they have health services, counseling, um, they're gonna have all of that on-site.
Have they used them before or something?
What's their type of?
I, I, I don't think we used it before because the government just piled in a bunch of money, and by a bunch of money, you know what that number was, we talked about it that night, it was several million dollars. What's that? To build those houses. What they're asking for is all the counties that are gonna be involved, that were gonna have a reserved number of beds at that facility. They are asking for a donation for every county, and our county and one other are the two that has not dedicated funding already, the rest of them have already dedicated funding.
What kind of funding did they give?
Uh, I know Houston was twenty.
Houston County was twenty thousand, and they, uh, posed to give that, um, the larger counties have, are giving larger amounts.
Right, I think I heard sixty from Dixon. So they reserved a number of beds for, for our community.
Do you know how many that was, that we gave?
No, they, she.
It's not a certain number.
She won't, she, she said they wouldn't know until they got to it.
Yeah.
Is that April?
Yes.
April, uh.
Fall.
Yes.
My only reservation with that is why we, you know, pay the money to the counties?
Well.
We'll house people from our county, this first is Stewart County, it services Stewart County.
Agreed. So like, if there was one of these in our, in our county, we had a man's home sitting here, you wouldn't be from Stewart County going there, you'd be going from other counties. And that's what she did, the counties that are gonna be sending folks there for rehabilitation, she's asked for those counties to participate in this.
Do we give any money to the others, places we send people to? Buffalo Valley.
Nothing we pay. Pay the fees.
I'm asked for a midcome.
I don't know who Buffalo Valley is. No, this is. I mean, I think if it's court ordered, we just amended in the budget finance, took the twenty-one thousand for a service that was court ordered, uh, and it was a, an evaluation, so. Uh, yes, you know, we, we, we pay.
Isn't any opioid money from our local ones that we're gonna have?
Yes, yes. The coalition asked for seventy-five hundred, we give them that. The judicial district drug court, they asked for twenty thousand, the committee cut them to five thousand. Um, there's not, they, they don't have a heavy presence in our court system. I think they were, I heard three or four people, maybe, and, uh, the committee felt like we ought to attack it with the others. So, but yes, they did get five thousand, they work in our court system. And then the rest was the school system and, and the programs that they're installing in. Now, I will say, this is ninety thousand of two hundred and fifty that we're getting, so this is not the end-all, be-all, this is just money they requested to go ahead and disperse. So this is not, this is not your final opioid abatement plan. This is the beginning of the plan.
When does this have to be set, the money?
Well, we have to have a plan for it at the end of next year, but. It, I mean, and we do, we'll, we'll have long-term plans when the committee meets back, and they, they, the committee asked me to carry the recommendation to you guys for this amount of money to start off, that's what. We already have it.
So how, how much is, how much should we have?
It, well, how much do we have in the bank right now?
For, for, yeah.
That we've already received?
Yes.
A hundred and seventy, probably, we had two things, eighty, am I correct on that?
Yeah, it's like a few minutes, you may not be here yet, but it's gonna be here any day.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, so I mean, this is. Approximately half of what we have in the bank. I know, I said this in the committee, and I, I'm not being a smart aleck about it, it got put out there that we were getting one point two five million, that's ridiculous, Montgomery County got a million, they have several thousand more people than we do. That was not an accurate number, we're getting closer to the two hundred and fifty thousand. Maybe a few more than that, because there's some coming on currently, and then there's some file of maker-ups currently. So we may gain five thousand next month, we may lose five thousand next month, so.
I, I, I'm somewhat okay with what's on this list, but I, I am not for that vehicle or that ramp. There is other ways to advertise versus buying a vehicle. I mean, I'm just.
If we, if we, if we wanna put a rap on a vehicle, let's, let's talk to the sheriff about wrapping one of his versus spending this kind of money on something that may be. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, that's just where I'm at.
Just the committee's recommendation, that's it, um, that's, they, they are in the voting committee, they're a recommending committee, and that's, I, I put that committee together, and that's a highly educated committee.
Absolutely, and I mean, I'm on, I'm on that committee, and I apologize for missing that, that meeting, but.
Yeah, no.
Mr. Mayor, could some of this money be used for something like cop camp or these?
Could it be used to help with cop camp? We can see, we can check that, the cop camp's specifically not listed, but there's a wide range, as long as it's dealing with treatment or opioid, it's, it's pretty set. I mean, we can do things with that money. And like I said, this is only a portion of it, you guys asked me to get started on it, and we've had five or six committee meetings the last couple of months.
What are the schools thinking about all this?
The schools worked very hard putting it together, I don't, it took them, it took them a solid month, probably. And they, they came in and met with the committee members, they had some, some, some more ideas, but the committee kind of narrowed it down to what they thought would be most effective over listening to you guys and asking what you were wanting out of this money.
Schools have been very good to work with on this.
Yeah, I mean, we can accept any motion, if you want a motion without the vehicle sent back to the committee.
If you want to send it back to the committee?
Or if you want, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we should send all of this back to the committee, but I, I mean, I think there's some things on here that could be, you know, adjusted, yes. I mean, I'm making a motion, we, we, what would it be without that seventy thousand five hundred bucks? I mean, to take that vehicle and the wrap out. I mean, that's just my fault.
I mean, you, you're more than welcome to make the motion, I'm not, I don't make a motion, so if that's what your motion, you have to make your motion, then we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that'd be my motion. I'll say it.
Motion, motion on the table is to remove the vehicle and the graphic wrap, and that will bring it down to seventy thousand five hundred dollars. That's the motion on the table, we have a second by Crier, any more discussion?
I, um, I know that when I say all these things, I look like I'm complaining because I didn't get what I asked for. But I really feel like our community needs to keep our money in our community. Giving thirty thousand dollars to Dixon, they're opening, opening a center that I, the same kind of center that I'm working on right now, that, you know, that I'm not getting any money toward my center, that we're giving them thirty towards theirs. And whether or not I get any money that goes toward my center, I still feel like this money needs to be spent in our own community. I've talked to several officers about trying to get cop camp back up. We have safe baby court that this money could go to, we have juvenile court that this money could go to. And, and I like April, she, she helped me, and we worked together, you know, on the grant that we both got, and I said that we both got the same grant. And I didn't, I didn't go to all the other communities around our, you know, around us asking for more money because I got a grant to open my center. But I'm gonna serve people from the twenty-third judicial region, I'm gonna serve, I have to serve region from, people from region five north, which does include people from Stewart County. Am I gonna be full of Stewart County people? Probably not. Because I have to serve the entire, the entire community or the entire, uh, region five north. But I specifically added in the twenty-third judicial counties because those are the people that are closest to me.
How much did you ask for?
Um, for, for my center, I asked for thirty-four thousand fifty dollars, and the reason that I asked for that was because we had some issues come up that we were not expecting, so we had to cover those issues. And do, and in doing so, it took money out of my, out of my grant that would be used for other things. In my, in my letter to the committee, I asked for that because I had to cover those things, and if, you know, perhaps if I would have worded it differently, like, I need furniture, or I need to redo my parking lot, or something like that, then it would have been looked at a little bit differently because they were concerned about not being able to pay for repairs on a building that I'm renovating. But the fact is that myself and Mid Cumberland are opening the same type of facility. And even though I'm not gonna have a hub in the middle of mine, we have to give the same services to the clients that come and live with us that they have to give to the clients that go live with them. So, again, even if it doesn't come to my facility, I still feel like thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money that we could spend in juvenile court. You know, Trish mentioned that sometimes kids need therapy that they can't pay for. You know, you've got safe baby court that I talked to Courtney yesterday, and ninety-five percent of those kids that get taken out of their homes to safe baby court are drug-related issues. So there's a lot of ways that we could spend this money in our own community. Even, again, even if it doesn't come to me.
And the people in Stewart County use your facility over there?
Yes, I've actually had two people call me today about moving in. I'm not ready for people to move in.
Excuse me, I have, I have, I need to ask you a question.
Yes, please.
You've been to our meetings, and I think in two of the meetings, when you were asked about who would be your residents, you said it would not be these Stewart County residents.
When he turned to me and said, will it be, will it be Stewart County people, it's probably not. It's not gonna be all people from Stewart County, because you have.
It's not gonna be all people. Also, how many rooms do you, how many people do you think that you will house?
Fifteen, we have fifteen beds.
And this facility is gonna house seventy-three men.
But, but are they gonna house seventy-three men altogether? I mean, at one time?
That's what the facility will house, is seventy-three men. So there's a little difference in the facilities.
There's a difference in people, uh, the amount of people, but not the facility, and not the, not the services provided.
There's a difference in the number of people that we will serve.
Yes, yeah.
And with the request that you made, you had a plumbing issue that we felt like would not qualify as an expense for, uh, because we have only certain ways that opioid money can be spent.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, but if I would.
But you're saying that you would word it differently.
If I would have worded it differently, and said, I, you know, I think.
But you're spending it on plumbing, but you're gonna.
I've already spent the money on plumbing, and that's why I, I asked for the money to cover it.
Whatever you ask for, that's how it has to be spent.
Well, and I can, you know, I can come back and write a letter that says, I need money for.
Well, maybe, maybe if you gave us your business plan, your layout of what you spent, what you anticipate.
I, I can certainly do that.
What your revenue's gonna be, because we, we didn't have very much to judge your request on.
You're right, and, and one of, one of the things that I, you know, I sent a letter today, nobody asked me either. No, but I, I, people said, I, I called Ms. Clark and asked her, nobody called me and asked me.
Well, Ms. Clark came and she gave a presentation of what, what, she gave a really detailed layout. You could have done that to any, at any of our meetings.
You're right. And, and again, like I said, I don't, if money doesn't, if the money doesn't come to me, that's fine. I just think it needs to be spent in our community.
So when I was at the board, um, the meeting when they first announced the opioid, when, that the money was actually rolling out, not when they first announced it, one of the things that the chair stated was, you are not saving the world, you are saving your county. By them reserving rooms in Dixon, I agree with the committee. By them reserving rooms at Dixon, I agree with the committee. We should fund that. Now, as far as your request, I didn't get in on any of that. I mean, I asked that you get the seventy-five hundred, because I was a part of the committee meeting that you were at that night that you said you didn't, you wanted to put the non-fund money off. And I thought that was very fair. Um, but also in those two meetings, you struck your request from the, from the budget, both of them. Now, I got the call from the chair today and said, how could we got this letter? And it was addressed to me, but I didn't get the letter, but that's okay. But I didn't even know about it right before this meeting.
Well, I know, my problem.
So, and that's okay, I don't, I don't have to know, because it was addressed to me, so. But then, um, that, she, again, brought that up. She said, we couldn't have approved it if we wanted to, because she struck it from the budget before we even discussed it further. And I forgot that, but you again, strike that from the budget. You said, I would remove the, I think the ladies, Trish may have said, the state offers a program that you're willing to introduce into the jail already. Why would we pay for it with this pot of money? And you said, if I'm correct, you said, I think you're correct, they don't come like they should, but I'll, I will withdraw that. And then they, I think the chair asked you about the plumbing, and, uh, I think she said, maybe she didn't find it in the, uh, where we could do that appropriately and get that passed. And you said, well, I'll remove, remove that request. Also, I'm not advocating for either side. I just wanna let the commission know if they didn't watch the video, if they want to hear it.
And it's, and it, you know, I did send a letter today, because chair asked, you know, how could, how could we do this? And everything that is on section B, letter B, I'm going to provide for the people that live in my facility. So, that's what I, that's what I sent.
There's, there's, this is not, you, you, you very well know this, you know the money as good as I do. This is not all the money being spent.
I know.
Um, but I, 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 there was two completely different plans laid out before this committee that is studied and studied and studied on this money. We have a motion on the table. Is there any more discussion, or do you need me to reiterate, reiterate the motion?
Say it again, please.
The motion is to remove the fifteen thousand dollar vehicle and the five thousand dollar graphic wrap, and send that back to the opioid abatement committee. And, uh, that would, that would reduce the money to seventy thousand five hundred per this request. And I will take a roll call vote on that, please. Sorry, I said, you have a moment, but I guess, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money.
Is this also going to be approved yet?
Approved, I've approved the seventy thousand five hundred minus the subtraction that I can.
Well, I'm sorry, wait, can we take, can we take my card out for a second? The, the seventy-five hundred, can we separate?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I will, we'll, we'll put it on record, that Melissa stated a conflict, and she will not be voting on opioid abatement. Please, and thank you.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teever?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Randall Redman?
Yes.
Shane Cates?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Archie Frye?
Yes.
Melissa Fields? I'm staying. Bradley Jones?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark Dorch?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and we will send that back to committee, and, um, when they get ready to meet, we'll bring more requests as, as they come. And this, that, I think that's the way we'll be doing it, hopefully, as long as we can. Number nine, I'll turn over to Sheriff George with approval of budget amendments.
Budget amendments are all approved with the exception of General Sessions' court clerk, uh, I don't remember, I think, for thirty-two hundred and negative six dollars. It was, uh, failed for lack of a, a motion, and everything else is approved by the financial committee. And I make a motion to, to say.
Motion to approve the budget amendments?
Second.
Second. Mr. Jordan? We'll also ask for a roll call. Is there any discussion on that? I apologize. Any discussion at all? Yes, yeah.
With the excep, with the exception.
That's, that's the way he presented the motion. He said, motion to approve with the exception of. We'll take a roll call vote on that, please, maybe.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teever?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Randall Redman?
Yes.
Shane Cates?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Archie Frye?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Bradley Jones?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark Dorch?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Number ten is a resolution to, um, adopt the Stewart County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is an update that you do every year. This group meets in the basement of a nine-one-one center. Every year, they update the plan. Um, it, we did not print it off for everyone. Uh, we started printing it off and realized we were gonna be a thousand dollars in the hole and lose fourteen oak trees. So, if you want to review the policy, if you have not, I know a lot of you have come by the office and have already reviewed it. Uh, if you would like to review it and push it off again, or if you would like to vote again, it's simply an update.
Motion approved.
Second. Second, Commissioner Frye? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Number eleven is a resolution to support of Stewart County Arts and Heritage Council. That's in your packet. Does anybody have any questions about that? I entertain a motion. Go, boo. Motion by Commissioner Redman?
I second.
Second, Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Number twelve, I completely understand, but I will fumble it. I'm gonna ask for heaven to jump up. It is a resolution to exclude fut, future, y'all can read it.
Uh, yes, this is, um, the TCRS program right now that we have in place that was adopted back in two thousand eight, uh, when the county adopted the TCRS, included a part-time provision. Therefore, part-time employees, from my perspective, full-time employees, it's mandatory that they take TCRS. Part-time employees, when we do the HR paperwork in the mayor's office, it's an option. So, we have to ask them, they have to fill out a form, whether they're gonna take it or not take it. It is the only benefit that's opened up to part-time. For example, part-time employees don't receive any health benefits, they don't receive holiday vacation, sick, longevity pay. This was just a provision, um, this was before me, that was adopted in two thousand eight. I'm not really sure of all the circumstances why it was included. But it is a cost to the county. Uh, it's about dollar value for twenty-three, roughly ten thousand dollars. It had eighteen different employees that had it. You probably have about ten that are active at any given point. A lot of part-time employees will come on and take it, and then they may not even stay employed. They may, um, pull their money back, et cetera. We pay ten point oh six percent on every one of those part-time employees. So, that rate is now going up to ten point two five in the next year. So, it is a way that the county can save money. It is, in addition to that monetary cost that we pay to TCRS, there's a lot of additional paperwork and a lot of confusion that happens in our office, because it is the only benefit that we're offering to part-time employees. It's just there as a potential cost savings. It's brought, been brought to me over the years, as something we may, uh, exclude doing. I will say that if we do exclude it, we do not, the people that are in it currently are grandfathered in, so they will not be affected. It will just affect future employees. Um, I think it's the first of the month, which will be first of May, if it was approved tonight. So, those employees will not be affected until they leave the county. They will still have the option, so, um, it will not affect those, it will just affect future hires.
Do you see this as a incentive to get hired, get employees coming in?
No, it's, I, I don't personally, I mean, my opinion. In fact, it's usually when we present it to them, it's a little confusing to them. Some know about it. We, we do have, the, probably the most employees that we have are employees that, uh, work for the school system, and then they also work for us in the after-school program. So, some of those, they're the only ones that I've ever seen that really understood what it was to begin with when they came in.
That was your point.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution to rescind the adoption of animal control registration fees, uh, that pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated six-two-two-oh-one. Several years ago, we put a fee on, um, the rabies shot. It was, it, it was a very wise decision then, I will say that. I think it, it helped get us to the program where we're at today, as far as animal control. You guys went above and beyond in animal control last year with money. Um, and we know we got a lot of work to do, but we, we're gonna continue to dig in on that. However.
Motion to repeal.
I know. If we have any discussion, I can explain, I can explain it all to you, but it's not. So, so what's happened, guys, is, is one of the clinics said the other one isn't paying. I go to, to the courthouse, they're both paying. And then I get one that says, you know, we, we can't keep up with it, we're not, it's, it amounts to four, bottom side four, top side eight thousand a year. So, we'll say averaging six thousand dollars a year. You guys were funding the animal control coordinator out of that at a fee of eighteen thousand dollars a year. We did not give that to animal control this year, because they had a healthy fund balance. I'm not saying they will not ask for that next year, and will not need that next year. This year, we did not, we had that money in our account. So, it's, the recension of this will not hurt anything this year, for sure. And I've spoke with both agencies, and, and both agencies understand what's going on, and they, they're.
I guess I don't understand that. They're all about animals, and they don't wanna pull the money in, like, we're trying to build something, if, if that's the case. You know, it's what, two dollars? I think most of the constituents that contact me over Animal Patrol is willing to pay the two dollars. I've never heard anybody say they weren't going to, but I thought we weren't getting the money.
No, we have never, we have always received the money. And we, we didn't, we didn't have in place a timely payment plan for them. We didn't. So, some of them was turned in, in every quarter, they get another half. Then it went to one check, one year, and, and it, it, it got.
It's nothing out of their pocket except for building.
I'm gonna second the motion. Motion to repeal the dog tax.
Second, by Commissioner Dorch. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item number fourteen, I'll ask the, if you have any questions on this, Sheriff Gray is here and knows all about this. So, it's a resolution accepting the donation of police canine Tody. We, uh, we, we, well, for lack of better words, we got a bill from the vet, saying we had a new dog, and we need to get it in place, make sure now, so we're covered. Insurance-wise, vet-wise, audit-wise, we gotta make sure we get all across the dots. Heather has called and checked everything. We're completely okay right now, but this is the night. If you're gonna do it, we gotta do it, and if you're not, then you need to.
Motion to approve it.
Vote it. I don't know which one of y'all, I'll check, I'll vote if you listen to it. It's prettier. I'll go with the prettier vote.
I would like to, I would like to hear it from the chair, if you will.
Okay, the chair's there.
Sheriff, can you talk to us about this dog?
Can you tell you about it?
Yeah.
Uh, it's about a, Shane, I'm not sure the age of it.
He's about three.
About three. It's a pointer, long pointer. It's exceptional, exceptional dog. Uh, the only thing, it's a drug dog, it's not a actual patrol dog, it's not a dual-purpose nut track or bite dog. But it's got an exceptional nose on it. I went to the training they went to, and I knew that before he, before we ceded to, to the, uh, training down in Henry County, uh, last month. But about thirty or forty dogs come in second. Only reason they come in second, because it just works slow and delivered. So, uh, and they like them to go to it immediately. But, uh, it's a good dog, and we're not gonna buy him, pull his tail, it's not gonna bite you. But it's, it's a, it's a small dog, but, uh, we are down on dogs, and, uh, uh, I wanted to know the dual purpose, but I was willing to take this dog, uh, because it, it's got such exceptional nose. It's a free dog, no any stipulations. If we get ready to get rid of it, or something happens, we have to retire it, it goes back to the owner. And the owner's got the option of giving it back to, uh, the person who donated it to him, or, or keeping it, so. It's a small dog, it didn't cost a lot.
My largest concern, Sheriff, did, did Shane have anything to do with training that dog?
No, no.
If he did, y'all need to vote no.
No, that's reason, that's reasoning such exceptional dog.
You have a motion on the floor? We have any more discussion?
Uh, the dog, I, I will say this. I got the dog last March, and I was at the sheriff's office. My intentions were, Stormy had knee problems. And I knew she was gonna have to retire it, so I picked this dog up, um, for that. And, uh, Ricky White in Henry County, I trained the dog, and, uh, of course, I lived with the state, and I got to use it. And God expressed interest in it, so I just gave the dog, he was a good dog, big cat dog. Uh, one of the best dog dogs that we saw, uh, I'll tell you the truth. Good kid, good with anybody, good little dog, good cats. It's like, it's like a coon dog, but it's a German word. It's probably, it's probably a six thousand dollar dog you have to buy, at least, before you train it.
Any final discussion?
I think it's good, the dog, that our shit's real bad.
Miller, Mr. Miller?
I think it's, that's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number fifteen is approval Stewart County Public Library bylaws, the changes in their bylaws. We had time to reassess ourselves, and do we have any discussion on their bylaw change? Motion approved. Commissioner Joyner?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Rand, Randall Redman, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number sixteen is the approval of Stewart County Public Library new board members. Board members being replaced are Kim Harvitz, Melissa Parker, Daniel Perrigo, and Ski Wazowski, uh, with Ashley Hayes, Crystal Perrigo, Alan Ross, and Joel Shannon. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Tomo.
Mr. Fields, the second. But Mr. Kate, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seventeen, uh, is the approval of the cloud service phone agreement with the veterans' office, with his call. This is the same organization that went in over at the, uh, the health department. And, um, with the approval down here, he's having a lot of trouble in the VA down here with his phone services going in and out. So, he sought out recommendations, I believe, actually. I don't wanna tell you, it's a lot of money. But we're gonna save a little bit of money with this one, have to have service. Motion by Mr. Mathis?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eighteen is the approval of surplus property. If you guys have any additions or corrections, or if you'd like to roll something, several of them, we'd be glad to. Vote in for it. By Commissioner Rocky?
Yes.
Second, by Commissioner Dorch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New business.
I got a little something, just food for thought. Uh, there's a lot, anymore, there's a lot of R and D, and they're, uh, maybe looking down, down the road, maybe having fallout shelter, or, or people who go with Kate, they are calling for R and D or whatever, and, uh, maybe in nearby through the county. Just something like that, that we might be needing work for, something like it.
That's something.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our mitigation. mitigation plan, we just approved, same as a, it is a project, and so it has to be in there first. And then if there's grant money that comes in, well, has the mitigation money that comes in, because it's in that plan, we, we can apply for that money. So, as that money comes in.
I think all the new, I think, resolutions, like these jerkies and tubs, they might, might wanna do something like it, and we take the liability off of them. And then you, or you're.
There is a law that.
Yes. And then also in that mitigation plan, I know it's always been a little bit of a, uh, conversation around here ever since I, I was a younger man, about sirens. So, we sit through this with the state, and the state, um, could only give us their opinion, first and foremost, legally. And they said, in our community, a siren is worth nothing. Um, it proved itself in Montgomery County with that tornado, and he's actually told the group that day that it would be cut in half here because of the hills and hollers and everything else, so.
I think I want to make the, 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 it's just something to think about, uh, that I don't want to make, now, I don't.
If I'm, if I'm, go ahead, sorry.
What about the siren? On a good day, I live in Indian Mountain. I'm not far from the county land. I can hear Dover Bottom shooting. It comes down that river. And I can hear him duck out in that Dover Bottom in Indian Mountain. What do you think a siren go to? Or if he hung on up around the steam plant over there?
I'm gonna say, I don't think about, uh, you think y'all are in any play.
So, I did, I spoke to you in the work session, um, about applying for, um, a grant for a walking trail at the, uh, community park. I'm almost complete with that grant. Uh, it, I finished most of it today. Still got another couple of days to work on it. We'll be able to submit that if accepted, and, and, and if a. another couple of days to work on it. We'll be able to submit that if accepted and if awarded. It'll be a quick turnaround on that, and we're gonna try to incorporate that walking trail when we do the work at the ball field. It, and I'm saying if, because we're not promised or anything, but the Health Coalition of Montgomery County has reached out and said they would like to help us do something. I don't, I don't know if they're mind it was twenty-five thousand or five hundred, which is probably what we're gonna ask, what we're gonna ask for. Now let us know if any...
Sidewalk.
All right, the sidewalk grant, from two thousand and twenty-one. You state that. It's a mess. The state, myself, Charles Parks Senior, has worked on this, Charles Parks Junior. We were awarded the money, and for example, in two thousand and twenty-one, concrete was shy of a hundred dollars a yard. We'll say up to a hundred. It's two thirty now? It's two thirty, two thirty. We have nowhere near enough money to even start that sidewalk. They're less talking about finishing. We don't wanna give the money back. We're working with the state to see if they will let us shorten the scope. They have told us, we don't have any more money left in the two thousand and twenty-one multimodal sidewalk grant. They actually, for that amount of square footage, when the engineer came, he said, I know what you're saying, but you couldn't have gotten enough for that in two thousand and twenty-one either. So we are slowed on that. It is, I say slow, but what I really mean is crawling.
What about blacktop?
Blacktop and the...
Instead of, instead of concrete?
We have already been told what we had to go over that levy with. We sat with our core, Jeff Hancock, and how we were gonna have to put the peers in there. They told us that they would entertain us changing our scope. And I think that's what we're gonna have to do. We're either gonna have to say, for example, from CMC to the nursing home, or from the nursing home to the library. We're gonna have to pick and choose what side of that we do. And the young lady was very helpful also. She told me that we could apply, again, immediately. Once we got the project started and on the road, we could apply for the next multimodal grant, and try to, if their committee approves the sidewalks. Got a couple other things that need to let you guys know real quick. Terry has asked me multiple times to get on the levies going to Paris Land because that's an eyesore. I have done that, and I have become a tennis ball between two rackets. TBA says it's the state, and you call the state, and then they decided there's an oak tree down there with a wire in it from the sixties. It's very hard, disheartening because when I call our state senator, and I call our state, and it's not their property. So we're gonna find out. I've got with Senator John Stevens on this, and we're gonna find out whose property it is, and then we're gonna take bigger ammunition back with us, is the best way I can do it. So part of the, part of the bridge, the state says, we don't own anything but the bridge. We don't have, well, we have thirty-foot rideaway or fifty-foot rideaway. TBA says, we don't even start, I mean, you listen to them, we don't start on there. That.
I think Corin here, though.
It's TBA.
TBA.
TBA owns everything on Kentucky Lake. Yeah, I did too. I got that. I sit straight.
Four engineers doing everything over there.
All right, so I got one more thing, and I know y'all ready to go, but I'm sorry, I gotta tell you this. Ms. Margie did some very good homework. We got back and got to working. Every one of you has said something about Gray's Crossing, Gray's Landing. State's a mess. You don't have the force in the county to get out and make sure it's cleaned up every day. Ms. Margie ran a very good program for a couple of years where we hired out workers that went down there and made sure the trash was up on Monday and Friday. When I came into office, there was no applications, and the work ladies had quit, and they did an excellent job. We waited for five to six months and never received an application. That's when we got with these nonprofits and said, if you want to make extra money, we'll show you how. That program is doing excellent. However, we're limited on where we can go and who can go on that property. I am gonna reach out and see if we can do that with nonprofits. It's kind of a gray area. We did it with our workforce slot, and it comes from the same pot of money. However, the project, the project that Ms. Margie and I are going right now is brand new. Matter of fact, she spoke with a group a couple of weeks ago. The director of the program called her up and said, can you explain what y'all are doing in your county because it's working? So, and she, being her delightful self, jumped up there and volunteered to speak to hundreds of folks. So, but anyways, she did the legwork on that, and we don't have a contract on it. Long story short, we don't have a contract on any of these property. That contract is long expired. Parks and Recreation, heavy discussion last night, if you watched the video. Commissioner Cryer drove there before and acted. There were people down there fishing. There were people down there playing guitar, and cooking hot dogs, and sleeping, and all kinds of stuff, so.
I mean, it's being used. Being used. So ever since we had the working meeting, we talked about it, so I've made an attempt to go down there. A lot of it's the trash, it's in the trash cans. People are putting it in there, it's just not being picked up, and it gets blown out. There was a bunch of families down there cooking out, and fishing off the banks, you know, every time I've been there. The only thing I can say is it wasn't from Stewart County. It was other county tags. And I potentially drove around to see who it was. You know, but it's, I mean, it is being used. It's a nice place, but it just needs some upkeep. And then talk on them saying we don't actually have a contract. I think the vote is to go back to TBA and us have a meeting with them, see what we can do. There's been discussions about not locking the gate, locking the gate, putting the dumpsters in there, not putting the dumpsters in there.
The recommendation from the committee was to go back and explore a contractor TBA. So that's the recommendation that I want to bring to you guys to make sure that's, I'm all in with that, but I'm gonna make sure that's the route we wanna go, so.
You should be able to leave that label from the road, and all those trees grew up in there, and a whole bag in there. They go in there, party, do whatever, and all that.
I mean, I didn't see a bunch of beer bottles and stuff like that, or, you know, stuff going on. I know Mr. Keith said, you know, that there was some police activity down there before, you know, I didn't see that. Not saying that I'm not going in there nighttime either, you know, late at night. But I know the gate has not been locked, or, you know, the last of the times I've been there, even at dark, so. Anything could be on.
If Miss Clinged up there on the road, it would help, so. They wouldn't, that would make better doing things, or I hope.
There's not something we can't go to the road department, ask them to come through and clear up that side, or call the state and ask them. Because it's part of the guardrail, but you're particularly right. You go behind that guardrail, it is, you know, covered up.
A lot of opinions were tossed around last night at the Parks and Rec meeting. There was a lot of good opinions. There was an opinion that we should take the trash cans out, put a dumpster there, so that you had it up to the dumpster and put it in, and you might be better off. But, you know, I think what's happened a lot of is like the coons and things, after people dump the leftover food, the nighttime comes, and they're having the bash down there, not being...
We might set up a live camera and start making money off of it.
Being the best predator.
The only thing about the whole trash can, you know, thing is putting the dumpsters in there, then everybody's gonna start using it. That's the only thing, is once they figure out it's saved.
And that's also an expensive accounting.
Exactly.
Another thing that I tossed around is, once we get with TBA to find out the ins and outs, because the contract's great, let's just put it like it is, it's great. Does that gate have to be there? All that gate's doing, if it's locked, is keeping honest people out. That's it. They've been driving around and going back there and partying, knowing the gate was shut. And the officers just drive to the gates, turn around, because they see the lock on it. To me, and I've spoke with our council about this, that gate is keeping honest people out, and that's it. If TBA would allow us to get rid of that gate, and just ask the officers in, I'm sure they wouldn't mind with their, with their car radios, it'd be a little bit better than their hand ails, because there is some radio trouble down there. They wouldn't mind not getting that other vehicle going down there to the intern, or coming out, if you're out west on duty a couple of times a night. I don't see that would be, I have the sheriff, he's not, he left, but he would not, I don't think he would have a problem with it at all. But again, then there's a couple last nights, and I, we just need to get them to lock the gate, so.
If there's a sign up, they like you.
Yes, there is.
There is.
Are they still there?
They're, they're. Bro, I was there.
They were there.
It's posted in several places.
And again, TBA may tell us that's all we can do, also. I, knowing full well, they may say, no, we're not going down there. Houston County asked for fifteen or sixteen acres, they got fifteen, to TBA. TBA is not, is getting out of, so if we get a contract with them, it's gonna be strict. And I don't know that, or you guys can make up your mind if you wanted to explore asking them for that property. The only thing with asking them for that property is they were still in the floodplain business. So, and that's a lot of our trash, our trash down there also. It's water, trash, water comes up, and...
Yep, washing it every time, yeah.
So if you get complaints on that area, I, it's, they're, they are legitimate complaints. But yeah. So if, if, I'm not asking for a vote or anything, but if y'all are okay with me exploring a contract with TBA and seeing what our, as a full-body commission, I would do that also. If anybody... You see anything? Oh, no. Providing the budget goes, so you're gonna hear about this, I wanted you to hear about it from me first, but it's kinda gotta happen by the county. Providing the budget goes through, and it's, it's been approved through the Budget and Finance Committee for you guys that weren't at that meeting. So it will be coming to you as a full body. We will be having a county fair the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of September at the community park. We've met with the Parks and Recs Committee. We have the Ag Extension Office and his entire crew. And we have a young lady named Addison Delaney, who has grown up in the fair business. Her parents own a junior livestock bunch out of Paris. She shows cows for a living. She blow dries her cows and irons her tails, so I was greatly impressed. So she's very knowledgeable about it, but if you hear anybody asking, we do have that in the plans. We will not sign any paperwork till the budget is complete, of course. We have went in, I've negotiated with rodeo already, and I told them, until the budget's complete, we would not be able to guarantee them a day or sign a contract. So that's, that's all in, in what we've been doing there. And I think it'd be really good for our citizens. I want to get, I want this to be a free fair. It's gonna be an old-timey fair. Joe said he's bringing out best tobacco, and best pies, and best corn, and all that. We're talking about having a animal showing, such as sheep and all of that.
Bring the dog.
Mrs. Addison Delaney has reached out to somebody and asked them if they would be interested in bringing one of their petting zoos, and it's a large zoo. They don't charge, other than they sell your children cups of corn, and that's how, it's probably not twenty-five cent corn, and I, you know, so it's probably gonna be that. But again, we're keeping that free for families. We're giving them something to do in the county. The things like the rodeo, the concerts that we have down there, that won't be what you pay for, the tents, all of that, that's what you'll be providing the money out of tourism for. The rodeo, we will have to charge. It will, more than likely, the recommendation would be, and we talked about this, what did we say? Five and under would be free, and then five to twelve, or six to twelve would be five dollars, and ten dollars for adults. We have to somehow pay for the fair next year without going back to the same well, in Indian Mountain well. And I think that's, I think that everybody I've spoken to in my realm about price wise, everybody was a-okay with that price. The rodeo says it's a little cheap. They typically are fifteen to eighteen dollars, but we're not, you guys have expressed to me as a commissioner, we're not going out here trying to make a dollar off this. We're trying to give our citizens something to do, and, and bring everybody together. So just wanna give you a heads-up if you're hearing out here. The only reason I tell you all that, because Danny Peppers is part of the Parks and Recs Committee, and it will be in the paper chief.
Wanna explain to them why the state relaxes and takes over once we go?
Right, so, and what we, and some of the things that we were doing, such as dates, why did we pick that date? I know a lot of you would probably say, why did you let us pick the date? Because you have certain dates. We eventually wanna take this fair and have a fair board and register with the state. What that will let us do is that will let us apply for state fair grant money. And there's a lot of it out there, guys. They give a lot of money to fairs. The state does, they do a job at giving fair money, just like they did Houston County, Williamson, something like, all those fairs. Wilson County Fair is massive. They get tons of money. But they set the guideline, and they say, you have to do this, 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 and this in your first year. And if you do all this, we will take you in. Such as, you can have your own identity. We can call it whatever, but the fair has to be called Stewart County Fair. So things like small like that, we'll get it to where the state will take it over. And not take it over, but they will assign us, we'll be able to make recommendations to the fair board, and they will vet those recommendations, and they will seek those for us. And it will help us bring a bigger or larger fair every year. And eventually, my way out there, I wanna find a piece of land that the fair grants. Because that park, if we put this walking trail in, and we put this money in the park, we're gonna lose a little bit of leverage as far as vehicles and things like that, where we would want them driving around. We're gonna run out of room. Yeah, they're super fast. And that's a good thing. I've told the Parks and Recs Committee, our county is gonna, gonna hit the ten percent mark this year in growth. You have, there's not many of us on this board seeing that. It's been twenty-five years, over twenty-five years. I only went back twenty-five years that I could buy help. So next year, I mean, you've got two contractors that are coming here, wanting to build houses, things like that. We're gonna keep on getting larger. It's here on top of us. We thought it was coming, it's here. So we have to plan for that, and this is a good way to get out, get back to our citizens. Also, directly after this, we are having a beer board meeting. So if we could, if you're not on the beer board, you can leave. The beer board will leave the state, and if there's a beer board issue, go on.
Motion to do it, Darren.
Second.